This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-6 et sec, notice which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Bordenborg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canaschino?
Here.
Deputy Ms. Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple proclamations tonight, and Councilwoman Bordenborg is going to do the first one.
Stephanie.
Yep, grab the mic.
This is a proclamation, whereas the City of Hackensack Police Department is fortunate to have professional dedicated officers like Police Officer Sergio Rinnelli, and whereas Officer Rinnelli is to be commended for his quick thinking and life-saving action taken during his response to a car accident, and whereas on June 1st, he was the first officer on the scene of a single car crash causing the driver to suffer heavy blood loss from a head wound, and whereas Officer Rinnelli used his knowledge in the use of Quick clot gauze, and he applied the gauze making sure the bleeding had stopped before he called for backup, and whereas Officer Rinnelli's training advisor convinced him to earn a Quick clot gauze certification while at the Bergen County Police Academy, he now considers the gauze to be a good tool to have. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Bordenborg, with the Mayor of the City of Hackensack along with the members of the City Council, do hereby honor Police Officer Sergio Rinnelli for his quick thinking and initiative shown during this life-threatening medical emergency. Thank you.
Officer, do you saw the guy again? No. Do you saw the guy again? No. No, yeah? He's here, no? He's out, eh?
You know, we just recently had our July 4th fireworks celebration, and I want to honor somebody, or the city wants to honor somebody, and it's whereas Alfred Sensary Enterprises headquartered right here in Hackensack, New Jersey is a multi-generation family-owned and managed business and one of New Jersey's premier real estate developers, owners and manager of commercial residential and hospitality real estate founded in 1945. And whereas Alfred Sensary Enterprise continues to strategically expand and diversify its industry-leading portfolio through both development and acquisitions, and whereas the company prides itself on integrity and is known for the quality design and construction of its buildings. The property management team is proactive and responsive and has outstanding relationships with their tenants, and whereas many of Alfred Sensary's properties are iconic landmarks in their respective markets, including Sensary Medical Arts Building in Hackensack as well as Glen Point Office Complex and Glen Point Marion and Teenac. And now therefore, I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack along with members of the City Council, acknowledge and thank Alfred Sensary Enterprises for their generous donation of $10,000 for the city's 4th of July celebration and ongoing commitment to the well-being and future of our great city. So, we thank David Sensary and his organization, they're always willing to help, and they do a great job, and we're very thankful for that. Okay, moving forward, need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular in COW minutes for June 12, 2018?
I'll offer.
Need a motion? I mean, I got a second? A favor? I looked over and saw people there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And I will turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the city manager's report for the July 23rd, 2018 regular meeting. First, I want to comment, letters were sent, but I wanted to thank all of those sponsors who sponsored and donated funds for the July 4th fireworks celebration, and also compliments to our city staff. I think the staff did a really great job. I was not present, but I was told that we had a little, end of the fireworks was a little less than par, but we're working on that. But I do want to thank all of the businesses that came forth, really put forth the effort to make sure that the residents and the people that went to the city really had a nice experience for the July 4th event, and something that I think Hackensack in time will always be respected for showing the right respect in our independence on July 4th. This past Monday, July 16th, a portion of Main Street from Sussex to Essex became a two-way roadway. The city continues to address the remainder of the Main Street and the two-way conversion plan. I think a lot of people thought initially that we were going to basically flip the switch, so to speak, as we did on State Street. Obviously, Main Street is a little bit more complicated, so basically the plan is right now, the conversion from Maine to Sussex and Essex has become two-way. The next piece of that will hopefully be completed, is that from basically Court to Atlantic, there'll be a two-way conversion from there, and then there's some infrastructure issues that we're currently working on, but we are progressing. There was a meeting today about grant funding for the streetscape improvements to apply for more funding. The last one, we were awarded a little over a million dollars. So, the city continues to move forward, and it's basically redesign and re-engineering of the city to obviously make these infrastructure improvements and also improve the city in its appearance and how, you know, people come to the City of Hackensack for shopping. Friend did the proposal of the COW meeting for basically the re-improvement of the mall, the shops at Riverside, and also now, we continue to move forward with our streetscape and also the revitalization of the city. Important information, our summer concert series, July 17th concert, Bee Gees, has been rescheduled for August 14th. That's our issue with the rain out. Our next concert is July 24th, which is the cast of Beatlemania. This was the typo in the pamphlet because they had the wrong year, but it's definitely July 24th, and it's been fixed on the website, and also, we will try to reach as many people as we possibly can. Don't forget to refer to your H-PAC pamphlet for upcoming summer concerts, movies, and stars, Movies Under the Stars, and much more. The building department update, 266 written notices, 342 inspections made, 19 settlements issued, zero CCOs have been completed thus far, this month. The city will be hosting National Night Out on August 7th. Motor City, the Motown band, Review, will be performing. This event is on the green, promotes good relationships between the community and our Hackensack Police Department. I encourage people to go. I think that it's a great time for relations building and a better understanding of what the police do, and obviously, what residents expect from our police department. Finally, a reminder that Hackensack PD also hosts a youth police academy being held on 8/20 through 8/24 for Hackensack. Maywood, Rochelle Park, and South Hackensack Kids, grades 8th through 12th grade. Applications need to be returned to police headquarters prior to July 27th. Reference the hackensack.org for details. This would complete the city manager's report for this date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Onward with business, Resolution 274-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 30, 2018, an ordinance adopting the 68 Zabriskie Street redevelopment plan consisting of Block 532.01, Lot 1, Block 527, Lot 5.02, and Block 532.02, Lot 1.
Okay.
This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, seeing none? Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, ordinance number 30, 2018, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 275-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 32, 2018, a bond ordinance providing for the installation of an adaptive signal system by and sewer separation improvements by and in the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating 1,900,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 1,809,500,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, ordinance number 30, 2018, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 275-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 32, 2018, a bond ordinance providing for the installation of an adaptive signal system by and sewer separation improvements by and in the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating 1,900,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 1,809,500,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, ordinance number 32, 2018, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 276-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 33, 2018, a bond ordinance providing for parking garage and lot improvements by and in the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating 1,300,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 1,300,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Okay.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 33, 2018, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 277-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 34, 2018, an ordinance to expand the City of Hackensack's special improvement district as established in Section 147 of the Code of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Move forward.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, ordinance number 34, 2018, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 278-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 35, 2018, an ordinance amending the City of Hackensack rehabilitation plan for the Main Street area in need of rehabilitation. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody said aye? Opposed? None? Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, ordinance number 35, 2018, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 279-18.
Introduction of ordinance number 36, 2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 117 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Parks to limit usage of the city's splash pads located at Harbor Park and Second Ward Park to children age 12 or younger.
Need a motion to introduce this ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 36, 2018, as introduced, does now pass on the first reading, and said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 21st, 2018, at 8:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place, when and where said ordinance will further be considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 280-18.
Introduction of ordinance number 37, 2018, an ordinance adopting the shops at Riverside redevelopment plan consisting of Blocks 504.02, Lots 12.01, 12.02, 12.04, and 12.05.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 37, 2018, as introduced, does now pass on its first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 21st, 2018, at 8:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place, when and where said ordinance will further be considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 281-18.
Resolution authorizing tax refunds for state board judgments.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 282-18.
Resolution authorizing 100% veteran tax exempt status for 147 Ames Street, Block 120, Lot 21.
Need a motion?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Resolution 283-18.
Resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated July 23rd, 2018, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Do I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 284-18.
Resolution authorizing tax collector to cancel sewer charges for a property located at 561 Main Street in the amount of $444.83.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Resolution 286-18?
Resolution authorizing refund for park permits.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? 286-18.
Resolution for the authorization for accrued time payout of $92,363.28 to Police Officer Ralph Kavala.
Do I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 287-18.
Resolution authorizing change order number one in the amount of $499.816.91 to New Prince Concrete Construction for the Main Street State Street Traffic Signal Improvement Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
288-18.
Resolution authorizing the cancellation of stale and outstanding checks.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? 289-18.
Resolution authorizing a public referendum on establishment of a municipal open space tax pursuant to NJSA 4012-5.7.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution 290-18.
Resolution 290-18, resolution authorizing Kaufman, Someraro, and Liebman LLP to represent the interests of certain individual defendants in Martin versus Hackensack and Sharif versus Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolution 291-18.
Resolution authorizing award of bid contract for 2018 CDBG road resurfacing project to DLS contractor.
Need a motion?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 292-18.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Okay, before we go to consent agenda, anybody have anything, conflict to pull out? I do, I need to pull out Resolution 294-18, please? We'll do that separate? Okay? Move forward.
Following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure supported by a certification of availability of funds, any items requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions for end or additions. Consent agenda is Resolution 293, resolution authorizing city manager a signatory on treatment works approval permits. Resolution 294, we're pulling, approval. 295, resolution appointing Albert Dibb and Wayne Reesma as members of the Bergen County Regional Community Development Committee. 296, resolution authorizing endorsement of proposed Bergen County Committee Development Grants for 2018. 297, resolution authorizing the submission of a national endowment for the Art Town Grant Application. 298, resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 219 Essex Street. Resolution 299, resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 139 Route 17 South. Resolution 300 is resolution authorizing an ambulance reimbursement. Resolution 301, resolution authorizing New Jersey State Family Leave Act application on behalf of Silvana Boleski. Resolution 302 is resolution extending conditional designating Eminem Hackensack Urban Renewal Company LLC as the redevelopers of properties, Block 315, Lots 8, 9, 11, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 21, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28.01, 29.01, 30.01, 30.02, 31, and 34. Resolution 303 is a resolution authorizing an adopt an island program.
Okay, just one quick question on Resolution 302-18, I don't know whether it's a typo, but 28.01 is in twice?
Yeah, I saw that.
And 29.01 is in twice, I'm assuming there can only be one of each? So let's make that clear, that there cannot be two lots, the same number, my knowledge, anyway. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody? All right? So it's 28.01, 29.01, and forward.
Yeah, and it just, it looks like on the resolution itself, it seems fine.
Yeah, okay.
Just a summary.
Yes, a summary, I just want to make sure there was no confusion there. So let's vote on the consent agenda, of course, excluding Resolution 294-18. All right, so I need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Now you can continue with 294-18.
Resolution authorizing Rappa license for St. Francis Church and Hackensack University and Medical Center Foundation.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed, myself, with a conflict, so I abstain. Okay, and with that, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to talk about the Medical Center Agreement, the Community Service Contribution Agreement. I'm not going to get into name-calling, I'm going to keep this, try to keep this on a really objective level. I've got five documents. The 1996 Developers Agreement regarding 20 Prospect, the 2016 Post-Community Agreement, the pleadings.
I'm going to recuse myself, while this is going to...
I understood, and you're walking out of me.
Take good use of it, thank you.
The pleadings in Nunamaker versus Hackensack, BERL 597416, the tabled Resolution 208-18 rescinding the 2016 Post-Community Agreement, and of course, the Community Service Contribution Agreement, Section 20 is my only interest. All right. See, the numbers don't lie. The problem is this, there's a poison, I would actually concede that it's a decent, taking the reference to 20 Prospect, I don't know, it's a decent agreement. Some would say, if I were the hospital facing maybe taxation of $27 million a year, giving away $4 million is a decent settlement. There's an expression, sort of Stephen has heard this, you know, bulls by, bears sell, and pigs get slaughtered. So, settling for that number is not a horrible thing. The problem is the 20 Prospect language. Letting that go forward, when you have all the leverage in the world to say no, we're rescinding it, because you recognize in May that it had never been carried through by either side, and the problem is the numbers. Mr. Manning's already got you $4 million a year spent, but I say, you're giving up in the long run, it's a losing proposition if you lose that case. Well, excuse me, if Nunamaker loses their case, because right now, this is incredible to me, you read the pleadings, the city is actually fighting against the rescission, the legal rescission of that agreement. You're fighting against your taxpayers. That's the pleadings. You're trying to say, no, we want to keep in the reduction from what is now paying taxes of $4.7 million a year, and that flat rates at a 3.4, that Developers Agreement, that modification from 2016, it doesn't make any sense, and you should have gotten rid of it. No, you can still do something, you can instruct your city attorney. No, we don't want you to take that position. We want you to consent, get out of that case, don't support the hospital on this. Because, with all due respect, yeah, they'll renegotiate, but the history of the hospital in terms of these agreements is not stellar. Every single one of the three, the 1996, the 2000... Every single one of the three, the nineteen ninety-six, the two thousand two, two thousand eight, they eventually agreed dissatisfied with, made you make changes. Could have been a lot better, that's what I'm saying, and don't let that poison pill stay here. Thank you.
The city is very proud of the agreement they've made with the hospital. We know our taxpayers are very concerned about their taxes and us able to provide additional revenue to offset some of that, and we're very proud of that accomplishment. You know very well that this Twenty Prospect is in litigation and cannot be discussed by the city until it's over.
I can discuss it, and you are fighting against your taxpayers.
Fighting, we're fighting for taxpayers. Thank you very much, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Okay. Next, please?
Good evening, Mayor LaRoz.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Good, doing well, thank you.
Could you just give your name and address to the clerk, please, sorry?
Angel Carrion, one ninety-five Davis Avenue. Last time I was up here, I spoke about the soccer, well, the indoor facility, sports facility at Johnson Park, and the M&amp;M building was being approved at the same time, or spoken of at the same time. I haven't seen anything happen at Johnson Park as far as building is concerned, so I wanted to get some information on that. I know the M&amp;M building is moving along nicely, which is nice, it's good, so I wanted to get information on that, that was the first thing. Secondly, Stipe Park in Hackensack, down by Davis and Coles Avenue. We're having an issue with individuals playing basketball at midnight, one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning. And we have a light there, which obviously facilitates the playing of the basketball. So we would like to put a timer on that, maybe at ten o'clock, cut it off.
Well, the park should be closed by ten o'clock, anyway, that's the time.
The light is still on, so that's why they, they keep going to it and playing. So that's one of the issues there. And then, my last issue, not issue, my last statement, reference to the open space tax. I am all for maintaining our open spaces, our parks, our recreation historic sites. It's extremely beneficial, right now, we, Hackensack, thanks to you guys, is rebuilding at an incredible rate. And we need our open space to be protected and preserved and maintained. In addition to that, you also have the issue of storm water management, which the open parks provide, and the open spaces. So, th- these are the reasons why I'm, I'm for it, I'm also for it because it sunsets. And no insult to you guys, but I'm always concerned when government starts taxing the hell out of us, you know, over and over again, so. The fact that it sunsets allows us to kind of take a look at this again at some point, and see how well you guys did with this, or whatever may be there. So with that in mind, you know, I, I, I think it's a good, it's a good thing to do, and I'm, I approve it, I go for it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Didn't you have progress on Johnson Park, can the city manager, wait, Mr. Carrion?
Angel?
Yes, sorry.
You asked a question about Johnson Park progress, I don't know if the city manager or Leo can address that?
We're gonna, we are looking to try to create the, all the spec to do the remediation. We are looking to try to complete it with remediation in the shooting range, and all the spec they there, and the bidding process started about two weeks ago, and they're gonna finalize, who gonna be the contractor in charge to try to do the remediation there, and the shooting range. After that is done, we will continue to doing the rest.
Basically moving forward.
Right, it's moving forward.
Great, is there a timeline for this project?
The only timeline is that we're gonna die, the rest, I don't know whether I can tell.
That's unfortunate, right.
That's it, that's the timeline?
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, it's kind of having a lot of balls in the air at the same time with everything going on, we're trying to, I think, you know, get the M&amp;M pretty much on its way, and then, once the remediation is done, then we could start, but we can't really do anything till that remediation is done.
So you never know what we're running into.
Right, right, because that hasn't been inspected yet, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next, please?
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, forty-seven Lodey Street, Hackensack. When you decided to extend the curfew for the parks, we, we expressed what the pros and cons would be on this. The gentleman just left, just, just told us, he just reinforced what we had said was going to happen.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but I think it's because nobody's turning that light out, that this.
No, 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 it's a little bit of everything, okay? First of all, the lights are there, there's enough lighting so that when a police officer passes, he can see inside and make sure everything's okay. It's the curfew extension that messes you up. A nine o'clock curfew was very important for the city of Hackensack. And it's because of these little parks that are tucked in these neighborhoods, that can't have that to extend after ten o'clock, that that's why that's important, and it needs to be enforced. So when the officer passes at nine o'clock and says to everybody, please go home, they go home, case closed. They're not extending it, because you give them this much, and then they go this much, and then they're going to be there all night. A nine o'clock curfew has always been enforced, or at dark, whatever comes first, to get these kids home safely. And it's only because of these little parks that are tucked close to these houses, Columbus, the one by Jack, by Jackson Avenue School, they can't have people playing all hours of the night. And I said if you wanted to do it for Mr. Sims to be at ten o'clock, extend it for him, who has permits, to have a program going on with supervisors, adults, and children there. But to have these other little pocket parks extended over nine o'clock is, and we told you it was going to happen, and it did. Case, case in point, he just told you that it's not right. Nine o'clock curfew is enough, because the kids have to get home safely. And this is, and all the parks do have lights, because I monitor them all. We have enough of lights so that when a police car passes, they can see what's going on, and they can say, it's nine o'clock, kids, go home. Columbus, Pulaski, Stipe, all these other little parks that are situated in the residential area. You did it for Mr. Sims, he has a good program going on, you could extend it at ten o'clock there. But the other parks, or policemen, need to do this, especially Polify. At nine o'clock, there's all these houses right around there, and the people do not want these kids there all hours of the night. And it would be, it would, it's a no-brainer, and we had said that, it's going to happen, and it happened. I have a big problem with property maintenance, it's really at its all-time low. I'm, I'm getting calls all the time, help me, my neighborhood is going to pop, you have people that take pride in their houses, they keep it manicured, and they have some slob living next door, because they decide they're going to keep junk in their yard, or do whatever. And especially in the mixed uses, to say only had nineteen summonses for a whole month, I could do this in a day, this is really bad. And this mixed use too, I mean, you get, you get a company that wants to bring their landscaping, they're putting all their junk in the front yard, all stuff that's outside is supposed to be covered, and, and people are upset with this, they're paying good taxes, and they're living next, this doesn't exist in any other town. And mixed use can, can work, if the people will comply on what the rules are, and they're not. And we have, and we have to go through this all the time, because people are complaining of what's happening in their neighborhood, and it's kind of scary. I also, I don't understand this open space, I hope it's not another tax, because we're going to have to build a school, and people are going to have to know that the school takes priority this year. Open space is wonderful, but we, you, you lost open space out when you did the M&amp;M building, there's no open space for those kids. And Mr. Sims, thank you, because two, two basketball courts cannot play. Number one, the one in Columbus Park, because it floods and it needed to be resurfaced. Last time it was done, nineteen ninety-four, and I showed you the paperwork, because I was involved with that. All water lays there, it's laying there, and Polify Road Park, that basketball court. So don't look for the nets, Mr. Betaglia, look for the courts, look what's happening. The nets, you know the nets, that was sarcastic when I said they don't even have nets, they don't have a court. It hasn't been milled since nineteen ninety-four, and now, all this week, the puddles do not disappear, because these are all gullies, but we're spending more money on Carver Park. It's, it's really, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty scary, that you guys don't think of all the other parks. And Mr. Betaglia, you had said that the drug, those are all the drug kids, and those kids don't even have a place to play, thanks to you, because you're spending all your money in Carver Park.
What do you leave now?
Yeah, you're, time is up.
You always say that the kids. Is this a question, can I answer?
Time is up, it's, it's an irrelevant question.
Talk to me later, I need, I need to talk.
He'll ask you that one later.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes?
I, I just want to make the comment about the hours of the parks, just a reminder that, that is from Memorial Day, it will end on Labor Day, and then at that point, the, the resolution authorizing it will, the council will consider whether it wishes to take any further action at that time.
It was a trial, basically.
Yeah, it's a trial.
It sounds serious.
Thank you. Next, please?
Regina De Pasqua, Parker Avenue. On the curfew, it used to be easier, when it got dark, you went home, that was it. Nobody stayed later, you knew you had to leave when it was dark. My thirty-something-year-old sons know, they have to leave, and now I tell them, no, you can stay, you, you can hang out in the park, people can hang out there, you don't have to leave when it's dark, okay? Everybody knew that, it always was. Why you changed it, beyond me. Yes, I do Oprah requests on Carver Park. Yes, people tell me stuff that's going on in Carver Park. I get anonymous letters, I get messages, I get information. And for anybody that gives me information to be called a snitch, I have a problem with that, okay? I'm not going into details, the person who said it is up there, knows who it is, and I will not say who was called. I have a problem with that. Yes, I, I make no secret of the fact, I stand up here every time, I do Oprah requests on Carver Park, people tell me what's going on in Carver Park. They're not snitches, they care. And first time I met Councilman Sims was when he was being interviewed to run for council, was at Canestrino's house. And the only thing he was worried about then, and I should have known, I should have known from this, was that he would be able to get the things that he needed for his program, because the then-city manager, Lockano, gave him what he, he needed for his program. Well, I think Mr. Sims figured out that being a councilman, he can get what he wants for his program, because one of the Oprah requests I did was backboard replacements, not the Nats, guys, the backboards, okay? Stipe Park got replaced in twenty-fourteen because the DPW saw it was rusted. Twenty-sixteen, Mr. Sims requested that Carver Park get new backboards. Twenty-seventeen, Mr. Sims requested that Carver Park get new backboards. Polify, nothing, Columbus, nothing, Stipe, last time was twenty-fourteen. It's like, you know, in the Brady Bunch, Marcia, 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 it's Carver, Carver, Carver. It's all I see when I'm doing these Oprah requests. Everything is getting funnel to Carver, and the reason it is a problem is because this is a business. He charges seven hundred and twenty dollars for a team to play in a, in a tournament. He's making money, what he's doing with it, I don't know. He's a councilman who is getting a benefit from this. Where his money is going, I don't know, because it's not public information, okay? This is why I have a problem with it. I've said it for months now, I've been up here saying it, do you get it? He is improving Carver Park where his business is, while the other parks are not getting that. That three thousand dollars for backboards could have gone to two other parks.
Thank you, Mrs. De Pasqua.
And you ought to give a, a second thought to that tax.
Next, please? Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay. Stephanie?
Fourth of July, it was a great night, thank you to all our vendors, sponsors, police, DPW, city employees that work so hard to get everything going. Everyone seemed to have a great time, it's nice to see the bounce houses and things like that there for everyone to use. July thirteenth, the concert series, it was, I, I don't remember the name of the band, Dave, what was the name of the band?
New York DJs.
They were, they were great, there was.
Oh, that, no, that's the ones that didn't play.
Who was it, the thirteenth?
Oh, on Friday night?
Yeah, Friday night one. I'm drawing a blank, they were, they were great.
Totally.
There wasn't a spot on the, on the green, it was, it was packed, everyone was having a great time, they were just awesome, everyone was dancing. It was a really good turnout, it was a great night. This Sunday, Kaiya's Lemonade Stand on Wilson Street from two o'clock to four PM. She's raising money with her family to come support, tackle kids with cancer. She is someone that battled cancer, a little girl in our community, she's a great person, great family. So please come out if you're not doing anything on Sunday to support her. It was this past Sunday, but because of the rain, they rescheduled it, but Wilson, Wilson Ave, you'll see everyone out there. August seventh, National Night Out, we've been going for years, it's always a great, great night. It's a nice night for the community to come out and interact with our first responders, and, and, you know, show their, your support for them, and, you know, build some bonds with them in the community, so it's a really great time. And August twentieth, the youth academy, they're a really nice group of kids that usually attend, and it's nice to have them all from different towns, because, you know, they'll, they'll be together eventually in the high school, so it's a nice bonding experience for them. Other than that, have a good night, and thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Deb. I agree, we had a really nice Fourth of July, I mean, the weather cooperated, thank goodness, we were all worried a little bit about rain and forecasts and whatever, and it wound up, it cooled off, and there was a breeze in the air, and, you know, it was packed, and we had a nice crowd, and, and everything went really well. Again, thanks to all the city employees, they did a great job in cleaning the park, and not only cleaning it before we got there, but while we were there, I mean, folks were working all night and, and really keeping the place looking a, as good as it could be with the crowds that were there, and, you know, the support of the police, the fire, the stands that were there, I mean, everyone worked well together, and I think was very well received by, by the folks that attended. If you're looking through the docket real quick tonight, you see that we're doing some improvements for our parking facilities throughout the city. Again, you see us, you know, we go through cycles where we look at things that have problems, and we try and tackle them, you know, simply, and doing it without a major impact to our taxpayers. So on tonight, we had some bond, a bond ordinance there, where we're looking to do some maintenance on the Atlantic Street Garage, which is long overdue, and on our surface parking lots as well. So, again, with folks, more folks coming into town to participate in our events, and of course, the anticipation of new folks moving into town is very important, as, and for our current residents, that, that we upgrade our parking facilities, long, long overdue. Also on tonight was the Zabriskie Street property, that's the old county building, we're looking at, they're talking about six stories, approximately three hundred Navy units being built over there. Again, that'll be, I, I think, a wonderful enhancement to that neighborhood, you know, it's very close proximity to the River Edge Train Station, and they're looking at developing a walkway that will connect them, and I think that will be a very nice feature for that part of town. And it will take something that wasn't paying tax dollars at all, and turn it into a ratable for us, so that's great news. This Wednesday is the Teterboro Airport Noise Abatement Committee meeting, I will be attending as usual for the city, and if I have news to share, when I come back, I'll get it posted on the website, and I'll share it with you folks at the next council meeting, of course. As far as the, the concerts go, I was at the first Friday night one, which was also, I mean, the attendance of these people, you know, word is out that these Friday nights are hot, and I think that's a good thing, you know, people are recognizing and really enjoying that park, and it's wonderful to see that. I hope the weather holds out, I mean, I, from what I see, the forecast, like, the next ten days, it's going to rain, so I hope we have luck tomorrow night, and we can, we can have our, our concert on the green, and all the rest of the events that are scheduled to the Atlantic Street Park for the upcoming week. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and those that are watching, have, have a nice, safe evening, and let's hope for summer to come back and have some sunshine, thank you.
Thank you, David?
Just wanted to thank you, you all, for coming out tonight. Have a good evening, get home soon.
Leo?
Thank you for coming. Nice.
All right, I want to start off by, it's a special night, our historian and our economic director is the birthday boy today, Albert. Deb is, it's his birthday today, so I'd like to wish him a happy birthday publicly. And we love Albert. Stephanie mentioned Kaiya's Lemonade Stand. This past Saturday, Deputy Mayor Sims and I were lucky enough to go over to the new McDonald's, which just opened, reopened, I should say, it was totally redone, did a beautiful job the way they did it, it's got two lanes, you walk in, it's got electronic kiosks, you can order, pay by credit card, just pick your food up and leave, it's amazing. But they were nice enough to ask the council, they, offering a thousand dollar donation to a charity in, in, through Hackensack, and who better to get it than Kaiya's Lemonade Stand and tackle kids' cancer? So we, he presented, Ed Aker presented us with the check, and Mr. Sims, I believe, dropped it off over by them? Did you bring it over by them yet?
They'll bring it next week.
Oh, next week, because our stand was rained out on Sunday, so next week, she'll be presented with the check for a thousand dollars to go to fight children's cancer. Kaiya has been battling this, she's doing pretty well, but as you can imagine, the treatment on a little girl. on a little girl, I think it's been, probably, she was like seven or eight when she got it, fighting this for years, it takes its toll, but she's doing very well, and as of last week, one of the doctors that she had been seeing says it's not necessary anymore, as, so, and by the way, her father is one of our police officers, Demetrius Carroll, so, you know, glad to see it go to one of our own. Fourth of July, unfortunately, this is the first one I've missed since I've been on city council, I was down in Florida on vacation with my grandchildren, and my, my son and his wife, but I was thinking of you guys while I was watching the Disney fireworks, which were pretty awesome, I've got to tell you. But, you know, I know there was an issue with the finale, because the very next day, I got a call in Florida about the finale of the fireworks, July fourth, by a few people, so we're working on, there was, was an electronic glitch with that, and we're working with the company to get some restitution in some way, shape, or form. Tomorrow night's Beatlemania, I don't know if you've ever seen them, it's a great show, from what I understand, one or two of them are still from the original cast of Beatlemania, when it played at the Winter Garden back in the, I'm gonna say eighties. Friday night's Latin Night, down at Atlantic Street Park, that's always a great show, great concert, a lot of people come, hopefully the weather holds up, and that's it, I want everybody to get home safe and have a wonderful evening, thank you. Okay, motion to close the meeting?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?